Yeah, went well?
Went relatively well.
Yeah, I didn't follow much of it, I just knew people said some of their animals sold pretty well. Good, good. Julie, you have anything to add before we get started? Yeah? Bruce? Yeah? Yeah? I'm gonna throw, I'm gonna throw a curve in this, let's do the major subdivision first.
Okay.
Okay, you can go ahead Chad.
Let me pull that up. So this is county property out in the Henry Business Park. I don't have the plat, there was a delay with that, I thought we were gonna have it, we were still waiting to hear from DPU. So I'll show it to you, it's up to you guys if you wanna vote on this at this time or not. It's all pretty simple, so he owns that whole property in there, and it's a public road business park drive. And over the years, we've subdiv- the county has subdivided different lots through there. They become major subdivisions because they're potentially commercial lots in there. Health Department's okay with it, I talked to Public Utilities today, they were delayed in their review, so I don't know that they're okay, we'd have to get an entrance, so. I'll defer to you guys, if you feel comfortable with it approving it contingent on me wrapping up all those loose ends, or if you wanna just wait till the next meeting to vote on it. That's, that'll be up to you guys. There's no real infrastructure involved on this one because it's, the road is built and everything, so there's no bond for me to get, or road to inspect or anything like that, it's, it's.
Is there any urgency?
I don't know, I, I didn't talk to, I'm not aware who's planning to buy it, so I don't really know. I had it on the agenda, I thought we'd be closer today, and nothing came in, so I'm just sharing it with you guys, you can decide.
You say you have to talk to the county?
We would do an entrance permit, most of these are all okay, it's a pretty good site distance in there, you know, it's a dead end road. But we still go through the process just to make sure, because if somebody buys that lot, we don't want them to have any issues with site distance, that's the main thing they would check. All of that runs through our office, so it's a pretty easy thing for us to monitor, but we would make sure County Roads is okay with it, and then I would just have Public Utilities sign off. Health Department's looked at it and they're okay, I just haven't heard from Public Utilities yet.
Anybody have any problems?
I don't see any problems.
Thank God. Yeah? Motion?
I'm going to approve.
Motion approved, thank you.
Second?
You put it, it's all in favor?
With the contingency, right?
Right, with the contingency.
Yeah, I will hold this in the office, I'll make sure Public Utilities signs, Commissioners talk to sign it too, so I, I will monitor those things. Again, if it's a commercial lot, they become a major subdivision for you guys to look at, but some of these that are a single lot, there's not really a whole lot for us to look at. It's not like we're doing stormwater and a road review and everything on a typical subdivision, no HOA documents, things like that. So these are a little simpler process, but I will, I will make sure all those other things are wrapped up and then give the view about signing.
Good deal, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move to Chad. Alright, now we're going, oh, I want to, went into the members, I think the email went out this morning during the chat about the Maryland Planning Commission's going out there, doing that.
Yeah.
Tutorial, whatever, that's something you guys need to look at sometimes, doesn't take long to do it. One of the things, you sit down for fifty minutes.
Yeah, we brought it up last, last month's meeting, there is that training, and I think I've told you who all have done it before, but it's an online thing, it's not that hard, it's a little bit time consuming.
If I can do it, anybody can do it.
You know how long it takes?
What's that?
How long it takes to do that thing?
Yeah, it doesn't take very long, it takes longer to read through it than it does to, you know. I may be exaggerating, it's a fifteen minute, it takes a little longer.
You don't have to study.
Ask you every part of it.
It'll be alright.
Alright, now we're going to the Attorney's Appeals Cases.
Yeah, let's do the variance first, because that will be a quicker one.
I mean, very.
Uh, so this is a application submitted by Hugh Humble for a variance to allow the construction of a new single-family residence to within one foot, three inches of the rear property line. Property is located at nine sixty-four Rockwise Road, McKinley, McHenry, Maryland, on Tax Map fifty, parcel three forty-eight, at Zone Lake Residential.
Where did they buy it back next to the lake?
Let me pull that up.
Is that the rear property line?
Yes, the lakeside's always rear by definition.
It's not a neighbor.
See it here, um, so they'll be near their own, but they've purchased the buy down, we amended the ordinance a few years ago. You can go within ten foot of the buy down line without variance, if you wanna go closer, you have to get a variance. It's somewhat of an odd-shaped lot, I believe in their application, they mentioned that it was a regular lot size, um, there were some boulders and things like that, that they were not able to meet the typical setbacks. They're asking for a variance to move down closer to the buy down.
The boulders is wide and go to the left, doesn't even, you want that twenty-four to set up?
I'm not sure exactly, I, I didn't talk to Hugh correctly about it, but.
That's fairly normal, we've done that before. One foot's pretty tough, though.
Yeah, they're showing it at two, they asked to go to one point three, which is a good idea in case you get off a little bit, you have a little bit of wiggle room, but, um, and that's a covered patio deck here too, so that has to meet house setbacks. The house itself looks like, the main part of the house would be four point five feet away.
Two points? Means already nine seven, nine point seven on the sun, I guess that's grandpa.
Yeah, I think there is. Yeah, there's a house there now, foundation that's eight point seven feet away.
I was gonna say, isn't that the old window place?
Yes.
It's settled, yeah.
Yeah, the original.
I don't know, is it still standing there? You need anything on this one, anybody?
We'll do a site visit, we'll review it.
Alright.
I said we'll do a site visit, uh, you're involved, we'll do a site visit. I don't have any problem, I guess we just pass it on down the line like you usually do. Because this is gonna go to.
You wanna put, you wanna put that in, anything in the motion, or you just wanna? Very good. Alright, next.
So the next one is a special exception five seventeen, an application submitted by Steptoe and Johnson, care of Pivot Energy Development, landowners are Randall and Sarah Harvey. This is a special exception for a solar energy generating system, community-sized, property is located at one thirty-six Paradise Point Road, Oakland, Maryland, Tax Map sixty-six, parcel fifty-eight, Zone Lake Residential two. So this one, let's bring up the mapping ones, this would be at the intersection of Paradise Point and Sam Flat Road, it's in this field. And that's a, should be array. So I would point out, just to give a little bit of history, so in original zoning ordinance, there were no regulations regarding solar. It was just had a very broad category for solar, or for energy generating, um, and back in twenty twenty-one, here in the Planning Commission, we recognized that we needed to add some solar regulations to the zoning ordinance. So we went through that process, we had several meetings that fall here, um, and then eventually it went to the County Commissioners to vote on. So what is in the ordinance right now, you can do up to a two-megawatt solar field with a special exception, has certain standards regarding setbacks and things like that. I think that was the compromise the Commissioners wanted to go through, respecting property rights a little bit to allow it to happen, but with a special exception. Since that time, um, the state has subsequently passed, and it just became effective in July, the Renewable Energy Certainty Act. And some of the pertinent parts of that is, and I'll just read or paraphrase some of this, that, this bill says, "A local jurisdiction may not adopt zoning laws or other laws or regulations to prohibit the construction or operation of solar energy generating stations." It says, "A local jurisdiction shall expedite the review, review and approval of site development plans for solar energy generating stations, if those meet certain requirements." Later on, it says, "If it has a generating capacity of not more than five megawatts, it's to be treated as a permitted use." So this law is preempting basically any local control that we have in those categories. When they're bigger than five megawatts, there are some other requirements about the septic tiers and things like that, and some other things in this bill about setbacks. But the way I read it, I don't believe the board has the power to deny a special exception for this. The board's power to deny special exceptions in general is limited anyway, anyway by case law, that says they really have to have a very strong reason to deny a special exception, just generally speaking. This could be a restaurant special exception, or any use that's a special exception. They have to show that the use on that particular property is worse than practically anyplace else in the zoned area. I don't think they have that capability to deny them anymore, I think this law would say it has to be looked at as a permitted use. I think the only thing the board could do now is perhaps put conditions on it. I think those conditions would have to be reasonable, or otherwise, um, this law would come into effect that we're basically denying it by a condition. So I think that's the only thing the board can do. I think that we will have to amend the deep creek zoning ordinance now because of this law. This is basically upending all the regulations that we wanted to do on the county level, so we need to look at it. There's some different setbacks and things, so we need to make sure that the ordinance, um, jives with those setbacks and any other regulations here, but I think the main thing will be probably pushing this into a permitted use, because I don't think we have the power to deny it at this point. So I just wanted to give everybody a little bit of background before we discuss the particulars of this case.
What I'm gonna do now, I'm gonna open up to anybody who wants to speak, just stand up, raise your hand, stand up, and we'll speak, got anything to say regarding one way or another about this. Before we wind any discussion in the board. Anybody have anything? Want to say? Part?
What, I, I got this in the mail, and my property is right down at the bottom of the map there, facing the array, that, yeah, that's my property right there. So, and, and it, the map doesn't show the scale, and I assume that the green, uh, the green are trees, and, and it, it, it also says proposed, and then it does say, you know, a wildlife fence. So I'm assuming that'll probably be a chain link fence that will probably have barbed wire on top of it, but nothing says that that's what it's gonna be. So I, I would be interested to know, like, who, who governs what actually is gonna be, and what the final, you know, who, who regulates it as to what their, you know, when it does come down for final approval, as to what it actually is gonna be.
So there are cer- certain things that we adopted in the ordinance, so for these community-sized, the things that we adopted in the deep creek zoning ordinance, um, they have to be setback a hundred feet from any property line. Uh, we have a regulation on height, can't exceed twenty feet at full tilt, uh, they can't produce glare that would constitute a nuisance, and they have to submit a detailed landscaping plan that results in year-round screening, and they have to have to have a decommissioning bond. So those things are in the zoning ordinance, that's our office, we have to do those. The special exception, the board could put additional conditions on it, so that's, um, special exceptions are kind of the maybe of the zoning world, you know, you probably can do it, but they could put conditions. So they could, for instance, the last one we had, they had a condition about, um, trying to avoid traffic during school buses and things like that. So they can add conditions, and that's true of any special exception use, but these things, our office is going to make sure that they do no matter what, so before we issue the zoning permit.
Do they make noise, like, do these things move to follow the sun?
Uh, I, I'm not sure if these are tracking or not, I, I don't know that they make a, I, I don't wanna say, I don't know, I mean, that's more of a question for them.
And then do they, since they're attracting the sun, like, do they, in, in the areas surrounding them, like, does it, does it get, like, thermally, does it get hotter right around them? Since it's like this black mass that's gonna be right there, and, like, do, do they, do they change the, the temperature right there?
Those would be good questions for the solar company, I don't wanna, I don't, I don't know for sure, and I don't wanna speak for them.
And then, you know, the Newsome Farm got denied based on, you know, this being the worst possible place in the county for a solar array. That was the reason it got denied, and, and it did get denied, so this is obviously a different parcel, so it's always been in the past that it then can't be denied because that, that piece is the worst place in the county.
Well, I think you're.
Now you can't deny it because this isn't that place, but, you know, this is gonna open up the door, and I know this law that, that you're citing, but this opens up the door in Lake Residential, Garrett County, I mean, Deep Creek Lake, for this to pop up all over. I mean, waterfront greens, and the money that these guys are paying, if it's not government-funded, this shit does not work.
Well, I would point out that other ca- a couple just differences in the other case, um, that one was a much larger one, and that was before we had any regulations, so they did deny it for those reasons. So on a typical special exception, I think that they could still look at that area and say that they still think this area is, um, a situation that should be denied. But I also believe that this new state act takes away that, right, so.
Yeah, and that's, that's gonna be hard, but that, I mean, Deep Creek as a whole, I mean, this is, this is a big.
Yeah, and I think this, the, the ordinance we adopted was an attempt to compromise between those two things. The Commissioners wanted to, um, they recognize that sometimes farmers wanna do this, this might be ten or fifteen acres, we were gonna cap it at two megawatts, I think that was the compromise. We'd still have the hearing, still allow concerns to be heard, maybe put a conditional, um, or conditions on it, um, I don't think this state bill allows that. You know, when this was in legislation, you know, I made comments reflecting these, that this was not what the county wanted, that we already had, um, you know, we don't have county-wide zoning, so in most of the county, you can do this anyplace you want. We have one area that we're trying to protect with a resort area and find a good compromise, so it was frustrating on our behalf because now the state is ruling that, but I believe we're limited by this act, by what it specifically says local jurisdictions can and can't do.
Thank you.
And the board's in an awkward position now too.
I understand.
Because, you're sorry?
Obviously, you get mostly your life opinion on solar, but that, when you pass these regulations and stipulations, if I recall, Bruce, you said, if somebody builds a solar farm on this plat, they couldn't build one on consecutive plats. Like, for example, you're gonna build the one behind me on the farm of Carrot Highway, I was told they can't build that on the consecutive farm that would stay farmland. Is this new regulation, so basically every farmland going down Paradise Point, up to Harrencoe and Paradise Ridge, could be sold all the way down, every single farm, all the way down. There's no stipulation on having to skip. Yeah, pretty much, out there goes my HOA. So there's no stipulation for having to skip any plot of land.
I don't believe so, the, the bill is pretty long, so there could be certain things I'm not familiar with, everything in it, but there are setbacks.
And the money they, the money that they're paying is absurd.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's, 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 it benefits one homeowner and at the detriment of everybody else, again, that's my opinion, I won't go through the long thing, you guys know my opinion, but I just wanted to know if this changes. So again, every open field along Paradise Point could be anywhere a solar farm, based on your understanding of this new law.
I don't think there's anything specifically spacing them out per parcel or something like that. Now, there, there are always going to be practical concern, I think that's a hundred-year floodplain here, so we still have things like that, you know, floodplains, steep slopes, potentially, um, they still have to do a grading permit, they still have to get fire marshal approval, they still have to go through a permit process. So there are still things that will, um, certain areas may not be appropriate, and, you know, they're still also looking at the lay of the land that it's going to absorb the most solar, and they have to hook to transmission lines, so. Whether every parcel is suitable is a different question, but I don't believe there's anything in the or- in this new act that would restrict it to say you have one here and you can't do it next door, not that I'm aware of.
What changed it gave was the July first bill that was adopted by the state, and that took whatever, whatever control the county had with the zoning appeals board, it kind of limited it to what, you know, what's gonna happen. Does anybody else have anything, wants to go ahead?
I violated my last question, was is there a hearing yet, except for third Thursday?
Yeah, that's the hearing that we're looking at now, so for these special exceptions, the Planning Commission has a role in every variance and special exception. The zoning ordinance says that for every special exception, again, whether it's solar or a restaurant or whatever it is, the Board of Appeals will ask the Planning Commission for an opinion on it. Now, they don't always give a formal opinion, sometimes that opinion is, we don't have any specifics for it, and the variants that we just heard, they may offer an opinion, so this is part of that process. The actual hearing for this will be on the third Thursday.
Third Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Ladies, you have anything you wanna say?
Well, I have a question about the tertiary, um, little creek that runs through there, that runs down into Pond Run. Is there gonna be any special exemptions for that one? I mean, these, these things cause erosion.
Yeah, so we, our office has not looked through this extensively yet, so once we look, we look at it in more detail, so we look at things like floodplains, perennial streams, things like that. If it's a ephemeral stream, they may still have to deal with MDE for it, so there'll be further review that is typical for every project that we'll still have to go through. This special exception hearing is more about the use in general and the things that are in the zoning ordinance, there's still other hoops that any project has to follow.
I think a bog turtle lives out there.
Well, we look at, we look at rare endangered species, so there's a whole list of things that we do look at for any project.
Anybody else? One, one thing I wanna add before we get too far along, is you had reviewed the state law very thoroughly, and we haven't looked at that, or just read a little bit of.
We've looked through and tried to find the things that we believe are directly state.
Are we, are we in a position where, and I'm saying this, I should be careful what I'm saying, are we in a position where we need to reevaluate the special exception boards to protect this farmland and stuff down that, on some of these places that are inside the watershed? I'm asking that question.
Well, I do think we need to reevaluate the zoning ordinance, but to bring it in line with this, um, so even if we disagree with it, I think we need to comply with the state bill, so.
I guess that's what I'm saying, what is, what is the process now, if we want to say, okay, I guess, my question is, do we need, can we take some time, just all kind of, stop all this process, to permanently just stop until we figure out what way, which way we're gonna go with the, with the Maryland thing?
No, I mean, the Maryland thing became effective on July first, so I don't believe there's any, we, I mean, we can take time to review our zoning ordinance and see if we want to make certain changes, but again, all those changes are going to have to follow what the state has already mandated.
Bruce?
Mr. Chairman, in my capacity as zoning board chairman, I have requested, um, a, a sit-down or a meeting with the county attorney's board attorney to, to explain this state ordinance to us, because I'm like Chad, I, it's pretty copious document, I'm, we're no lawyers, we wanna be able to understand this. I don't, my first take on it, I don't know that I agree with, um, that we don't have any, any recourse, and I, I, so I've requested from Chad's office to, to, if we could get the, one of the attorneys to, um, to, um, explain this ordinance to us. And in, in light of that, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if, I'm gonna ask the board, the planning commissioner for an opinion, but I, I'd like to see us table this, uh, this special exception for at least thirty days, to give us time to get, understand this document from the state. It's all coming pretty quick, it's all pretty new, I don't wanna, we don't wanna make a mistake here, guys, this is a, this is a big issue for the county, I'm telling you, it's a big.
This is the first one.
Well, the first one with this new state thing happened to us, you know, we went to, like Chad said, we went to a lot of trouble to, and with, with the advice of council, and, and drafted an amendment, you guys remember, to the, to the zoning ordinance, to, to put the language in here that Chad just read it, because there wasn't anything in there. And we thought we had the basis covered, and now the state comes in and drops this on us and says, you know, in, in first blush, you think it says, you guys, your opinion doesn't matter, your, 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 um, your comprehensive plan doesn't matter, we, your, this is, that. I want a, a legal mind to explain this to me and make sure that's what it's saying, I, my opinion.
Julie?
I think, well, I, I was gonna say something, and then he said that, but I kind of agree about tabling it, um, but I also do trust what Chad is saying, that we kind of lost our ability to.
Well, I, I think that, yeah.
I could get an interpretation from one of the attorneys, but my, my reading of this was the, it says it shall be treated as a permitted use, so moving forward, I don't know that we could deny it at this point, or maybe even table it, but I'll, I can defer to the attorneys on that question.
Well, here's, here's a question I have, somewhere in that document, I believe I saw that you couldn't, that the verbiage was something like, you cannot enact ordinances to keep this from happening. We already have something in place, I don't see anything in there that says, and again, I'm not, I'm not a legal mind, but I don't have it, I don't see anything in there that says, hey, you, this erases all your existing ordinances, maybe it does. I would just like somebody with more knowledge of it than us to test it.
First, I'd like to thank Bruce for, for putting that up there, because you guys aren't lawyers, and so to, to interpret something coming down from the state, I think, having Jeff look at it, or Getty, or whoever the, the county's using for that, is definitely worthwhile on this. Because I think if you, if you lay down the map of the county, this is not the only parcel of ground that is gonna be looked at by, by these solar array companies. And, and thi- this is a huge impact to Garrett County, so it is definitely worth taking another look at, and, and when you lay, laid that map out, there's hundreds of farms, and believe me, as, as a developer, I'm, you know, not without coming before this board for a special exception. So I know what it is to come before you for a special exception, however, to, uh, to, 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 you know, not look at it open-mindedly, and you guys are very creative, and you can always come up with different ways to interact with the state, to go around and create setbacks and different things that, that can inhibit making it worthwhile for someone to do something. You don't have to prohibit them from doing it, or saying that we can't, you know, the, the state, the state says that I can't stop you from doing that, but you can always say, you know, the setback has to be two hundred feet, or whatever. I mean, you know, there, there's different things that you have options to do.
George.
Protecting the area.
That was like part of what I was thinking too, is like, what can we do if we can't deny it, what, you know, what can we do, like, figure that out?
Yeah, we can.
I think that's all we need to explain.
And I've reached out to Mike about that, but, you know, there are specific things, you know, "Local jurisdiction shall expedite the review and approval of site development plans," so I think whatever we do, my reading view is gonna be limited, but I can certainly get with Mike and get, get a better evaluation of that.
I mean, this is permanent, like, this is, and then it's formed a domino, because there, you can't compete with that, and no farmer can farm a land that has solar plants covered in it.
The, now, we'll put out, point out that, you know, we don't have county-wide zoning, so the rest of the county has been open, this bill does actually have, it's a little stricter for the rest of the county, it provides some setbacks, it provides a mechanism that we can require decommissioning bonds, so in some way, which we could not do in the areas outside of Deep Creek before this, so, because usually those sort of things come just if you have county-wide zoning. So this does give us a little more teeth to maybe regulate, put some setbacks, landscaping on those areas, but I think, um, you know, I must be, I think the Commissioners, Planning Commission would all agree that we came up with something because we wanted to protect the lake more, um, and this is loosening those controls.
Next week, we have what we call MECO convention that we're going to, Commissioners are going down with it, and in that, um, the sessions that we have, there is a session on solar panels. So I'm sure that there's gonna be some pros and cons about all, what we're talking about here, so, whether or not we can table this or not, I'm, I'm not, I can't say yes or no, but I would be in favor of tabling this, at least till after we hear what some of the other counties are going through and what they're, what they're doing about this. I know there's, I know there's some counties that have a lot of farmland down there, and they, they don't wanna see all their farmland going to solar panels, so.
Bob?
It might be something to think about, uh.
Right.
Whether or not you wanna do that or not, but I know we'll have, and I'll, I'll be definitely going to that session.
Thanks, Larry. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Bob Hoffman, for those of you who have not had the pleasure of meeting, and I, uh, I am a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we're for this guy in the teal shirt. Bruce and I, uh, for the, I think you said it was the Newsome property, sir? Because we denied that.
Bruce denied it.
Bruce and I put our heads together and came up with almost a full brain when we did that, and, uh, we looked at a lot of county documents, one of them was the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and determined, at least in our judgment, that putting a solar farm in that location of that size was not consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. I realize you're not a, you're not a body that's going to make a decision on this, but I do sense that you're being supportive in our need to better understand what the state is trying to tell us, so that we can do a better job for Garrett County, uh, and, and the board process. What I wonder is, because we've now got this case coming before us, which, which I think ought to be tabled for at least thirty days as well. so that we, of the board members, can understand where we, where we stand right now. It's gonna be different. And, and I would like to know what, what is left that we might be able to do versus what we've totally lost. But going back to the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, if, if at that particular point in time, and that, that case, when we denied it, we expected it would be appealed. It was appealed. It went to the circuit court, and Judge Strubin found for the county in that case. So, if in fact that was a valid argument, if we accept that, 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 that location was not consistent with the land use plan, I would ask, why would, um, another plot of land that's on the other side of the road, but just, you know, can't be far, it's a matter of feet, you measure it in feet, why would that place be okay? And, and, and if it's not because of this new state law, then does that, does that new state law then go further than just the, the, the zoning part of it? And render some of the documents that we used as arguments, are they no longer any good? So, I think it, I'm glad to hear that, that that's, uh, an agenda item for, for Mako for next week. But I would respectfully submit, you know, I, I take the responsibilities for being on the Board of Zoning Appeals seriously. But for me, seriously speaking, you know, I'm not prepared to sit down and judge this case based upon the knowledge that I have had, that, that I've gained just by reading through the act. I finished that this morning. I don't know any more about it than when I started. It's in general assembly speak, and that's not my language. Thank you.
So, Mike, my question now, Jeff, I want to ask, do you have anything to add to this?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, this is under two megawatts, right? Two megawatts or less?
It is two megawatts.
Two megawatts.
And the letter that came from the attorney, whatever, did say the proposed use and allocation of the project is in accordance with the county's comprehensive development plan. Do you agree with that?
Well, what we did in the zoning ordinance, we allowed, when the zoning ordinance, we allowed up to two megawatts. Because I was aware that they were going to increase the size of community to five. So, we specifically put two in there because we wanted to limit them. Um, and then we did not limit, so these are all community size. So, that's a type of, it's like a subscriber-based system. There are other ones that are just, the Newsome one was going to just be fed into the system. That's a commercial grade. We did not allow those in the zoning ordinance. So, this new state bill, I believe, now changed that up to five megawatts for community. It has some different categories or different criteria for projects bigger than five. So, um, but it's, it's permitting them all with certain conditions though, whereas we were not permitting larger than two.
Okay. Well, my take is, I, I really agree with a lot of people, what they're talking about. Uh, because I'm actually looked at solar agreements, and it's a lot of money. It's more money than the farmer's gonna make on the rest of the whole land for years to come. So, they're all willing to do it, especially if they're in pension, in my opinion, unless it's the very best thing. So, since this is like the first one, I agree, and I'm, I'm off the tabling this to get a better understanding, maybe a legal opinion as to what we can or can't do. I mean, maybe just hold it for another thirty days, but nobody really has a clear concise answer on everything that we're talking about here.
Well, learn what, yeah, learn what about Mako, I changed, I changed it again, a little bit in my opinion.
Yeah, census first. Now, you said we can put more conditions. Okay, like, how far can we go with conditions? So, and I would like to look at it a little bit further and maybe have some ideas on what kind of conditions that we pick.
Maryland thinks that reasonable condition, right? Is that what it was, you think?
Something.
Well, it, it doesn't.
I think, because I, I don't agree with that.
So, that's, that's what I want to make, you know, if that's two times higher, can we make them plant trees that are twenty-foot high? You know, versus a shrub that just goes around? I, I don't know.
Unless that, right, does that just go forward?
Extreme deal, yeah, I mean, or how extreme can we get? We want it to.
And that's where it's gonna come back to what, depending what we, what, how we decipher what the thing is requiring.
So, is it reasonable conditions, or can we get like unreasonable?
Chad, is that, is that approximately ten acres? Is that, does it show that?
Fifteen, it's twenty-five acre platform, I think it's fifteen acre solar field.
Normally, two, two megawatts around ten to twelve acres.
Ten to fifteen is what we've seen for most community size. A two megawatts is ten to fifteen acres of disturbance.
Fifteen point twenty-three acres.
But that's in line with what we've seen on the other ones.
So, real quickly, I, I appreciate your going in and asking for the, the table. Because my other concern was, again, you've already approved the solar farm behind my house, uh, which is a real car from the house that's up in the little book. They haven't built that yet. Could they come back and ask for a larger, again, you put stipulations on that. So, my concern is, will they be able, if you don't put the stipulation up, can they come back and not put the fence up that we get all agreed on? So, again, even the existing approvals, I would love to give an opinion, whether or not they could come back and...
Well, this bill does have, I believe, regulations about fencing, decommissioning setbacks. So, I don't think this bill would negate those things.
But still, we could get a legal opinion on that.
Jeff?
I guess, what grounds do you table something? I mean, is that a...
I would get a, I would get a legal opinion on that. I mean, if you guys want to make a recommendation, I would probably reach out to the attorneys and say, this was your advisory opinion. Um, and then the attorney could weigh in whether they think that's, um, something that the board should entertain or not, or whether you have legal ground to do that. So, that's up to you if you want to make that as your advisory opinion to the planning, or to the Board of Appeals.
I think the, the, the Mako thing, I think would be a, maybe Mike can have a understanding that that, with them going to see the, the Mako, maybe they can get an answer on some of the stuff that's going on. Do you feel like that's even possible? Are you gonna change anything, or are you gonna...
Well, the law exists, so it's a legal determination now.
But they changed the law, right?
Yeah. For anybody that doesn't know, Mako is the Maryland Association of Counties. That's the lobbying group that represents the county. So, this bill, there were other forms of this bill. This was kind of fought over the whole legislative cycle. There were worse parts of it, where they were gonna make the counties pony up for a certain percentage of solar and things like that. There was a negotiation, um, then this is what was kind of the compromise. So, um, you know, in that sense, it's, it already exists. In that sense, it's a done deal. It's an act that was signed into law by the governor and took effect. Now, there still could be interpretations of it to clarify what's in it. But at this point, I think it would take further legislation to change this.
So, the question would be, you table for, if I give a recommendation to table for thirty days, sixty days, now what? Does that something that even matters, or you think that's, so you talk to, you talk to attorney, we all know that. If we can make a recommendation, then you have to talk to attorney, see if we can table, or is that what you're saying?
I think so. I mean, you're, you for, you, you serve as an advisory group to the Board of Appeals, also the county commissioners, but in this instance to the Board of Appeals. So, they've requested your advisory opinion. You can give an advisory opinion. If it's something, in this case, that we know is controversial, I could reach out to the attorney and say, is this valid? Should you follow that advisory opinion or not?
I mean, if you're gonna, if we wanted, I guess, my question would be, without knowing legally, the day he lives in my ear, right? Without knowing legally what, what the, uh, say to table with. We want to table, we want to ask for sixty days, we want to ask for thirty days, we want to ask, I mean, that's the kind of stuff I don't, I mean, I don't know about. I mean, you say, I'm gonna open up to anybody has a motion, but let's say if it decides to table, do you want to leave that open ended?
It's up to you.
I don't know, I'm just asking a question to you, what you think.
Well, if we're not, if we're not... Essentially, not, it does sound like we're gonna vote on anything, so I'll make it table for sixty days.
It's, it's probably up to Mike Getty when he can get to it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we make a motion to table it until we get an interpretation of the law from...
Attorney.
Attorney.
I think you, so you, you all are going to give an advisory opinion to the Board of Appeals. I think what, if you choose to do that, you would say, our recommendation is that the Board of Appeals table this and not do the hearing, um, if you want to put something in there that you want to get, uh, a legal opinion to see if that's correct. But I would do that if it's, you know, just knowing this case.
Want to do a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that. We recommend to the Board of Appeals to wait for the, get our legal opinion in this, this whole process as far as the state law and what we currently have in our comprehensive plan before we make the decision on the special exception.
Hang on for a second. Art?
Yeah, and on, uh, I just wanted to add, I, I would think that this board would have the power to then on top of anything that the state dictates like that, that you would have the power to add a caveat to that permission.
Well, the planning, the client, plant...
Like, even if it's approved, this board should have the power to say, even though it's an approved use, on top of that, you have to add these things to the permitted use.
We can recommend, we can recommend to the Board of Fields, the Board of Fields have to make that.
Yeah, they, they, even though it's a permitted use, you have to observe these setbacks, this landscape plan, this entrance, this maintenance or whatever, to make it, you know, a suitable use. And this is a, this part of this county is a resort here.
I have one other question. Bruce, you're requ, have you requested that from Mike Getty yet?
To Chad's office, I have.
Yeah, and I reached out to Mike today.
Okay, so how, how would Mike respond? Would it be at one of the meetings, or in a letter, or email, or how?
Oh, I'll just, I'll ask him.
Okay.
If he wants to.
Okay.
First, I'd like to have a, to get in front of him, I'd like...
Right, yeah, that, me too, yeah. He, that he could attend one of the meetings, your next meeting, or our next meeting, or something.
Come special meeting.
Or once he's sure, yeah.
And just to clarify for everybody, we do have kind of two boards going on at once. Bruce is a member of both. So, we have the Planning Commission, Bruce is a member of that. He's also the chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, Planning Commission is a general advisory group to the county commissioners. They're involved with overall planning. They have a role in amending the zoning ordinance. There's a specific role that they can do that. They give advisory opinions to the Board of Zoning Appeals on specific board cases. So, that's, that's your role today, is giving them advisory opinions. Even if you say, we think you should have a setback of seven hundred feet, that's an advisory opinion that you guys would then go to the hearing and take that into consideration.
I can say, make them ten to nine foot high. If they go to the building, they go to the board, the board's gotta get their people like that and say, we can only go six foot high.
Yeah.
You know, maybe, we could, we could say, and say, I'll make it a hundred foot high. It doesn't matter until you...
And, and, you know, on top of, I, I do understand these farmers, it's, it's agricultural land, and a lot of them, it's their retirement as well. So, I, I do, I see their side, you know?
Which is tough not because they've got...
Especially, especially after this, after the season we just had.
Yeah, no, I, I, I do, I totally understand that, that side of it. So, it's, it's, it's a tough one to be...
Okay, now I get back to my motion. You remember what it was? I got, we know what it was. Are you okay with that motion the way you verbalized?
It's up to you. So, you're, you're recommending it be table, that you're recommending that the Board of Appeals table?
The, right, the hearing or the judgment, the, uh...
Do you have a timeframe, a month, or you just indefinitely, do you have it for at least one month? Is that what you're...
Sixty days or the later of.
I don't think you put it number one until, that's gonna be up to them to decide, I guess, at some point, right? We, we just want to table, we'll just table it, or make a recommendation to table it. You want to put a timeline into it on it?
Yeah, I would say sixty days or, or the later of, if we get the opinion after the sixty days.
That make time fair, say sixty days and then...
Yeah, it's your, it's your opinion.
Because I know, I'm a CPA and all legal services, we're swamped, we're, you come to me with something, I'm not spending any time for thirty days.
You okay with sticking?
Or just until a, a legal opinion's provided.
Yeah. I mean, I think we just have to say we're tabling it. You want to put, you can put it tabled indefinitely, but you can't put that either. So, let's just go with the, the table for sixty days, until we get some answers from, you know, review from, from our county attorney.
So, you recommend it be tabled by the board for sixty days, and this would be contingent on review by attorneys if they would come back and say that's not appropriate?
That's all right. Okay, everybody good with that? That's the motion for that. I need a second.
Second.
Second, you want a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? So, moving to you. Okay. So, the main thing is, I mean, I get the, I get, I get the impression that just before you adjourned, I get the impression that the state law has been passed, it's gonna cause you some grief in our seventy, year old house.
Well, a lot of state laws cause that.
Is this gonna be the windmill, or not the windmill, but the solar, or is it gonna be anything else that's gonna be affected by it?
Data centers.
Well, you, you know, that's part of our, you know, we have county regulations that our office is hired to enforce. The state can though, overrule those. You know, we've all gone through a comprehensive planning cycle a couple of years ago. We put a lot of thought into it. But over the last several years, we've seen multiple times, the state has then done things that were contrary, that septic bill.
So frustrating.
Accessory dwelling units is another one that they've kind of stepped in. So, they preempt local control. They often do that. Step in, do something that's contrary to what the local jurisdictions want.
System, Valley.
Yeah, that was another example. They passed state law that was mandatory. So, it's not uncommon, um, for the state to do that. And, and we're not the only jurisdiction that have issues with it. You know, there's other jurisdictions, and there was a, you know, there was a fight during this legislative cycle, and this was the final result of it.
How did we, on the sprinkler thing, didn't, weren't we, didn't we drag our feet adopting that? I felt like the rest of the state had that for a while, and we kind of came in later.
I believe it was in the building code, for instance, in the twenty, two thousand nine or two thousand twelve version.
So, we had adopted the code or something.
And we hadn't adopted a code. We chose to not do that part. And several other counties were doing the same. And then the state passed legislation that said, because we adopted the building code and we amended different parts of it. They adopted legislation that said, local jurisdictions could not amend that part of the building code anymore. So, then our hands were tied. The county had to adopt it with that section that says sprinklers are required in single-family homes.
Anything else, Chad? You want to go over Mako? I want to thank everybody for coming to the meeting. I'm, for, for, I do like input. I like to hear everybody's opinion on stuff, so it makes it a lot easier to enlighten. And for the worth, the meeting's now adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you for working out.
Hey, Tony, you know, you know, the next one needs to be on our agenda.
What's that?